This is the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs in joint hearing with Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs. I am the Chair, Tim Richards. I'm here with Chair Wakai. This meeting will be streamed on, or is being streamed on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:15 on February 6th in this room, 224. And a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. Testifiers, please be aware you have a two-minute time limit to ensure that everyone is able to submit testimony and have their voices heard. If there are any temporary technical glitches during the testifying via Zoom, we will move on, but we'll come back to you, just as long as the time constraints. So contact us. We appreciate your understanding. Remind you that the Committee has your written testimony. If you're interested in reviewing your testimony, please go to the Legislature's website. There you will find a link to the status page for the measures you'd like to review. With that, before us, we have the first measure, Senate Bill 1409 relating to county user fees. First testifier I have is Michael Hinazumi from County of Kauai, Department of Water. Okay. We don't have Mr. Hinazumi moving on. Mr. — oh, he's on Zoom? All right.
That's Keith O'Kamoto.
No, that's Keith, yeah, from Big Island. Okay, moving on, we have Mr. O'Kamoto from Big Island. Go ahead, Mr. O'Kamoto, you have two minutes.
Hi, aloha, Chairs, Richards, and Wakai. Appreciate your time and effort and what you guys do. In addition to our written testimony, I do want to share that we really do support DHHL's efforts and their mission. And, you know, we've been historically collaborating with them for many years, especially, you know, with technical engineering assistance, collaborations with cost sharing on infrastructure projects, and even most recently with even out-of-the-box solutions to provide water credits, you know, in advance of completion of required infrastructure. So I guess to put it candidly, we're quite disappointed with this bill and very concerned on the potential financial implications it may have on our department and subsequently to other ratepayers, our other water customers. And besides that, you know, there is a potential for abuse and misuse, you know, when you set these types of caps. So that's another concern that we have. And, you know, we just appreciate this opportunity to testify. And other than that, I do stand on my written testimony. Thank you.
And clarification, Mr. O'Kamoto, in support or oppose?
Oh, yes, sorry. We strongly oppose this bill as written. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next testifier we have is Mayor Bisson from Maui. Do we have him on Zoom IT?
Not on Zoom, Chair.
All right. Mayor Bisson opposes. Moving on, we have Mr. Jean Albano from City and County.
I'm representing —
Okay.
Aloha, Chairs.
Aloha.
Aloha, Vice Chair and Committee members. My name is Warren Mamizuka. I am the Deputy Director for the Department of Facility Maintenance, and we stand by our written testimony and in opposition of Senate Bill 1409.
Okay, available for questions.
Available for questions.
Thank you so much. Moving on, we have Ernest Lau. Mr. Lau, please go forward.
Thank you, Chairs, Wakai, and Richards, and members. Aloha, Ernest Lau, Manager for Honolulu Board of Water Supply. We submit our testimony in strong opposition to this measure, and like Keith, you know, this is a little puzzling because we believe we work well with Department of Hawaiian Homelands and Chair Watson. But I did just shoot at a PowerPoint presentation that I'll just go over really quickly within my two minutes. So I hope that all the members have copies. So this is also covering the Companion House Measure 2. If you turn to this page right here, this is actually — oh, Chair, here's a copy for yourself.
Does everybody have a copy?
Yeah. Okay. This is actually infographic showing our water system. So I want to make it really clear, the vi or the water in the underground aquifers in its natural state, we're not charging for that. What we charge with our water rates is really all this infrastructure that's needed to take it, pump it from deep underground, from underground aquifers, and move that water throughout the island through pipes, through pumps, through water tanks, through water treatment, and get that to our 170,000-plus customers. So what we're charging our customers is really the cost of actually providing water, drinking water, meeting all federal and state requirements, 24/7, 365 days a year to our customers. When they open their faucet in their kitchens, they will be there. So it's really the cost to deliver and maintain this, operate and maintain this water system islandwide. Next page. Board of Water Supply, we're semi-tanous. We are part of the City and County of Honolulu, but we're solely funded by people paying their water bills, the rate, what we call our rate revenue. We receive no funding from property taxes. Our customers pay for the operation maintenance and also our capital program to continuously renew and replace our infrastructure to make sure that water is available to our island. Next page, please. So in terms of our method, we took from the State GIS system where they identify where your DHHL properties are located around the island. We overlaid that with our customer database, and if you go on to the next page, we identified currently an existing of about 4,500 DHHL customers that are customers on the Board of Water —
Wrap up, please, Mr. Lau.
Okay. So that's five, almost 4,500 customers. Next page is actually —
Wrap up, your timer's up, Mr. Lau. Sorry.
We may have questions later.
Yeah, we'll have questions.
Thank you. I'll be available.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lau. Moving on, Mr. Demont Kalai Manoali. Okay, moving on, on Zoom, Tom Yamachika IT.
Aloha, Chair, members of the Committee. This is Jay McMillan on behalf of Tom Yamachika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We have submitted some comments on the measure and will simply stand on our break. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Marian Kapuniai in support. Moving on, Ronnie Inagaki. Ellen Awai in support. DHHL in support in person, Director.
Good afternoon, Chairs, as well as members of various committees. We did —
Identify yourself for the record.
I'm sorry, Colley Watson with the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Based on our last hearing, we did go and check out as well as inquire as to the positions of the different counties, other counties other than City and County of Honolulu, and we didn't get any response, but I would assume they're probably jacked to it. We did a quick analysis of how much money we'd be talking if there were a waiver of the sewer and water fees. A typical homesteader pays about $240 a month for sewer and water, so we have about $4,443. So the total collections would amount to about $12,800,000, reducing or implementing the ceiling or cap of $100,000. That result in, you know, a waiver of about $12,700,000 that the City and County, the Board of Water Supply and Sewer, it would be lost revenue, so to speak. That is a lot of money, but as I indicated previously, the majority of our beneficiaries are lower income. So this $240 a month waiver would be, would go a long way to not only addressing the monthly costs that a lot of these individuals and families face. So we would request that you approve this particular proposed bill.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, and available for questions. And finally, we have Michael O'Keefe. Michael, come to the table, please.
Good afternoon, Chair and Senators. I'm Roger Babcock. I'm Director of Department of Environmental Services for the City and County of Honolulu. So we submit a testimony in strong opposition. So we stand by the testimony. I'll just add, as was just mentioned by DHHL Chair, that it would be lost revenue for us. We calculated about $5 million for the existing customers for that service that we provide. If we need, if we were required to waive those fees, then we'd have to raise fees for everybody else. So I appreciate the opportunity to testify and happy to answer any questions, be available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Committee questions.
Yeah.
Senator Favela.
Chair, Director, Colley Watson, I wish I could call you, but anyway, longer than I call you for lunch.
Call me whatever you want, okay?
How long has it been calling you for lunch? Anyway, can you give us something? I know you gave some numbers in Greek because that's what I was thinking in my head about the numbers, but if you can tell me, I mean, exactly right now, beside the bill out of the homes, how much homes you are really talking about right now, islandwide, having right now that is hooked up, not the future bill out, but the ones that is bill out now.
Are you talking about our 28 projects?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at maybe 3,000. We're going to do paper leases, total a little over 6,000. And then if we get, if we're successful in getting that additional 600 million, we'd add probably another 2,300. So a total of close to 8,000, that's the goal.
So you guys don't work out the numbers that they're talking about on the major revenue loss?
Yeah, as I mentioned, just existing situation.
$12 million?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, it's significant, but it's also a significant benefit to our beneficiaries if they don't have to pay. And let me just say that, you know, like on the real property tax, there was a waiver, a seven-year exemption, and the taxing is not on the land, it's on the improvements after the seven-year exemption expires. There's different ways, you know, maybe you could make a ceiling or something like in this one, you capped it at $100,000, maybe more, you know, it's really your guys' call. But any kind of help that you can provide to our beneficiaries, these monthly expenses that are, in a lot of cases, very difficult for a lot of our beneficiaries. I mean, we're talking about overcrowded conditions, we're talking about, you know, homeless, incarcerated, all kinds of socioeconomic and health issues that have plagued our beneficiaries. So when it comes to just paying your electricity bill, much less your mortgage, as well as these kind of fees, any kind of help is appreciated.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Can I get Roger? On the City and County, because you guys, we just talked about Honolulu right now. So a lot of the properties that you guys have, whose original lease and original deeds belong to? A lot of you guys' property in Hawaii, who is the original, besides the city having seen the city land and state land?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question, Senator.
Well, the question is that because before the city got onto the property that they have and all the money that they've been making never really conspired back to the beneficiaries over the years, just going to give you that. And we're talking about helping families. We all talk about in this square building that we want to help Hawaiians getting home and Hawaiians to prosper and do well, but then each home that what Director Colley Watson is saying is about $200-something dollars, you're going to have to raise the fees. You guys already raising the fees. You guys built one big humankind upgrade in my community over billions of dollars. That was only for the treatment part of the sewer. You guys have built offices that you guys already had offices, and then Staten Island. See, nobody talk about these money that's coming from the city and the overspending that you guys doing in these areas, but then we talk about rail. The problem I have is that this is going to benefit, and you heard the Director, is going to benefit the poor and the less fortunate Hawaiian community. So I understand you guys are going to have to do this and do that, but why don't you guys cut spending, which you guys first? For every people in you guys' offices pay that you guys own certain land that actually belong to our people. Because that's the bottom line. You know, we nickel and dime, we've been, before I came in this group building, we can be nickel and dime the Hawaiian community for years, and then here we are again, trying to nickel and dime. These guys are dying on the list. So I'm not blaming you, Roger, you know that, don't take it personal, but I'm just saying, you know, I have a good relationship with you guys, I'm just saying. But if we really take outside the box, are we really trying to help the homeless, not just the homeless, regular, the homeless Hawaiians, okay? In the district of Waimea, College District there, I deal with them all the time. Lady that live in a cow plant, a power plant, she couldn't afford her utilities. That's why she came homeless. She had Section 8 and all these other, but it didn't because fees increase. So that's why I just, if you can just kind of think, all of you guys, just think outside the box, not picking on you or Honolulu, and all the city that's just looking at the part about just revenue. I know it's $13 million, I don't have that in my pocket, I'll be happy to give it to you if I did, but I don't. But if we can really just think on how we can compromise with Hawaiian homes in trying to see what we can do in the utilities. There's one more question. So I had a bill, it wasn't heard, maybe one day it can be heard since we're talking about them now. So everybody's utility bill, from electric to utilities, we take a half percent of the utilities and divert it in a certain, I mean, either teacher, teacher housing, school facilities, or even Hawaiian homes, to round it off. So a principal from the continent, they would share that with me, that they do that to improve their schools, but what if we want to think outside the box, instead of taking away $13 million from you guys, maybe the water and sewer fees, we take a half percent to write, no, not a half percent, excuse me, forgive me, not a half percent, sorry, Chair, to round off the bill.
Be a little lenient, too, Senator, but —
Round off the bill to the nearest dollar and divert it to a department, I'd just say maybe Hawaiian homes. I mean, that's just an option, you know, something to think about, Chair. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Other people, other questions? Go ahead, Senator.
Board of Water Supply, please.
Oh, sure. Can I just make a comment?
Quick comment.
Okay, real quick comment. I just want to say that with our proposed sewer fee increase that you may have heard of, that we have proposed now, we do have a customer assistance program as part of that where folks that qualify based on income, less than 80% AMI, will be eligible for a reduction in their sewer bill that's fairly substantial. So I did want to mention —
Okay, actually, what I'd like you to do is get that information to the Chairs and we'll share it amongst the Committee.
Sure, happy to do that, thanks.
All right. Mr. Lau.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation here. Do you have any idea on how your lump sum can be broken down to the actual ratepayers? I mean, I know that's asking you to do quick math, or maybe you've done it before, with how much that would increase, because BWS just released their presentation on increasing rates as of last year, I believe, so —
Yeah, actually, we, the Board adopted new water rates in 2023 for the next five years.
Okay. And then, so if BWS or ratepayers absorb this cost, it would increase them substantially over the course of, well, at least projected the next 50 years?
Yeah, we're going to have to go back and actually calculate the impact on the other customers.
Okay.
So just to, for the benefit of the public, if I could, just, they don't have the benefit of this presentation, we estimated that there are about, currently, about 4,500 customers that exist on DHHL property, someplace on Oahu that we serve. So we took the, taking away the $100,000 and everything after that would not be charged. We estimated that the, over the next five years, the lost revenue could be someplace between $30, $32, $33 million and $36 million. Then we tried to project out because this arrangement would continue basically until it's repealed. We did projections at 10 years, the cumulative impact, and then 20 years, the cumulative impact, and 50 years, the cumulative impact. So the impact on other customers, you know, we have to go back and look at that to see, you know, because ultimately, you know, I appreciate the Senator Favela's concerns about the Arkanakamali and their situation that they're struggling, and there are a lot of people struggling in this community in addition, in a broader sense, too, that we try to keep our rates as affordable as we can.
Yeah, because I think ratepayers right now are just getting adjusted to the recent increases that had just come forth. So this would put an extra cost on ratepayers.
Yeah, and the cost to operate the water, yeah, so this would be like another, sort of like a surcharge on the rest of the customer base. Yeah, it is a challenge, how to balance affordability and still provide safe and dependable water service to our community.
Sure, thank you very much. And then Chair, just one more question for DHHL, but if anybody has questions for BWS.
Before you run off, Mr. Lau.
Yes.
Question, Chair, did you have a question?
Yes, so, but your projections are based upon the current usage of Department of Hawaiian Homeland residents now, right?
Yeah.
So with the projection, because we gave them $600 million plus, they want more, to increase the residents.
That is a challenge. If you look on the slide here, says —
So they're projecting another, at least another 2,000.
Yeah, beyond the 40 —
Beyond what, beyond the current.
Yeah.
Are you able to project that amount to the requested taxpayers?
Yes, we can, if you turn to this slide here.
Oh, that includes —
It says new developments, and this is for 1,000 new homes. Because we don't know what Chair Watson's long-term plans are.
Well, he projected 2,000.
Two or 3,000 more.
And probably more later on if he gives more money.
Yeah, so for each increment of, say, 1,000 homes, in five years, that would be a lost revenue of about $5 million. In 10 years, 11, and then going out to 50 years, 106 million. So again, you know, you're absolutely right, Senator, the amount of financial impact on other ratepayers or other customers on the Board of Water Supply is directly related to how many DHHL customers. And I, don't get me wrong, we work very well with DHHL because, and maybe this is not the same for all the islands, but for Oahu, when they build the infrastructure, and sometimes we'll look for opportunities to partner with them to develop new infrastructure, they build it to our standards, we inspect it, then we take on the responsibility thereafter to maintain, to operate. And then we have a project right now going into a homestead in the Kapolei area to do service out of replacements. That is being done at BWS cost. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Lau? Seeing none, thank you. Go ahead, Senator. Colley.
DHHL, please, thank you. Chair, thank you so much for your motive to help our beneficiaries. Is the Department not projecting any revenue to be able to absorb this cost from the beneficiaries? Because as much as I want to relieve the cost of these kinds of rates, I also don't want to additionally burden whether it be ratepayers or taxpayers, because currently, right now, I mean, people in my district are living paycheck to paycheck. So to be adding another $50, $100, I mean, that's heavy. So I'm hoping that at some point the Department is going to create revenue to absorb this cost, because I feel like it's just depending, your department is depending on taxpayers and the ledge to continue to give these handouts where the Department is not thinking economically and driving a revenue, a machine to be able to absorb these costs that will come up, because we're talking about currently, over the next 50 years, $1.4 billion, that's just with the existing homestead, and then in addition to that, 1,000 residential units with an additional $106 million over the next 50 years. So, I mean, I feel that the Department really has to start projecting how it's going to generate its own revenue to absorb this cost.
Sure. With respect to generating our own revenue, we are starting to get active in developing our unused lands. As you know, we're trying to do a raceway park, we're trying to do a major industrial park in Kalailoa. We're also looking at putting a hotel on, what do you call it, the Kamakana Alii, you know, just, we have about nine different revenue generating projects in play that we are hopeful will generate revenue. But, you know, when you talk about fees, especially these kind of fees, water and sewer fees, I mean, that's a monthly burden. Obviously, you know, to a certain extent, we all got to carry that burden, and it is passed on to the general users, granted, but at the same time, I think if we talk about this special class of individuals that we're talking about, the indigenous people that have this inherent right to certain benefits, I believe, you know, whether it's a reduction in their real property tax, right now they pay a lump sum for the land, and that was done intentionally to provide an opportunity to make it more affordable for the beneficiaries. I would suggest, you know, if you're less inclined to grant this cap on $100,000, maybe seriously look at capping a similar lump sum fee that is charged to a beneficiary regarding these types of fees, which would, I think, be a lot more helpful than, you know, the waiver of closer, over $12 million in infrastructure cost. But the more important thing is how do our beneficiaries survive? And I think that monthly $240 a month is pretty onerous for a lot, as well as the fact that it's going up, so.
Sure. I really want to urge you to start looking at the revenue that you could be generating currently with the commercial properties that the Department does manage that is not paying market rent, such as Kamakana Alii, the transit center. There is a lot of commercial properties that the Department is not paying, not charging market rent, and the trust is losing millions upon millions of dollars that could easily absorb this cost. You wouldn't have to continue to come to the ledge to ask for more money. But you are projecting projects based on potential revenue when you have, when you have projects currently active that you could be generating some kind of market revenue. So if you're not going to charge the market rent for the commercial leases that you folks have, what would make us confident that you would be charging market rent or generating the revenue from, let's say, the raceway park or whatever kind of other hotels or projects that you have if you are not currently exhausting every opportunity to generate revenue from the properties, commercial properties primarily, that you folks have now? So that's my concern, is we're sitting on an opportunity to generate revenue right now, that's not being done, but then also crossing our fingers, hopefully, you will generate money for future projects. So again, as much as I want to relieve the beneficiaries of a cost like this, I cannot justify it based on the Department not doing their part in generating their revenue and then passing that cost on to ratepayers, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
I obviously disagree with you on that, your comment, but it's noted.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, I have one. Thank you, Colley. IT, do you still have Mr. O'Kamoto on Zoom?
He's on Zoom, Chair.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Oh, yeah, there he is. Hello, Keith. Keith, you heard the projections from City and County as far as costs. What would be the cost for Big Island as far as lost revenue?
Yeah, so we had to scramble, run some numbers, what it looks like, and, you know, we're, we have a smaller customer base, of course, than Oahu, but it looks like on our island, we have just shy of 2,000 customers on Hawaiian homelands, and our projected annual loss in revenue is about $2.25 million. And, you know, that's compared to our overall operating budget, which includes, you know, everything we need for us to operate, at around $70 million. So it's a — So it's a significant component, for sure.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we are going to recess and go into decision-making. We are back in session. Given the conversation that we've had and the concerns raised from our Departments of Water Supply, though I think that this is a really good swing at taking care of a community that does need help. This is pushing this onto the county waters systems that I don't think is the appropriate thing to do. And I think there is a way to find the funding to help out our Hawaiian homes community. So it's the recommendation of this committee, this chair, to defer this indefinitely. Chair.
Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs agrees with the decision to defer this measure.
Thank you, we are in recess. This is the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs for our 115 agenda item. It's from Housekeeping First. This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube. In the likely event, in the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 1:10 PM, February 6, in this room, and a public notice will be posted on legislature's website. Testifiers, please be aware of the two-minute time limit to ensure that everyone has time to submit testimony and have their voices heard. If there are any temporary technical glitches during the, your testifying on Zoom, we may move around and come back to you, time permitted. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the committees has your written testimony. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the legislature's website. There you will find a link on the status page for the measures you would like to review. Starting with Senate Bill 1408, testifiers, we have Department of Hawaiian Homes in person. Colley? Stand on your, okay, stand on testimony. Thank you. Is there anybody in the room that would like to testify on 1408? Moving on. Bill 1553. We have Department of Hawaiian Homelands in person testifying in support. Colley?
No, thanks. I think I might want to add a little bit to it.
Sure, please.
Because it's kind of an important bill. Colley Watson, for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, Chair, as well as members of the committees. This particular bill is, I guess, our attempt to get a little bit more innovative in trying to get the cost of housing down. So one of the ideas was to create a modular manufacturing plant. There's a hangar out at Kalailoa that's sitting there, it's not being used. So we did approach the University of Hawaii, they have it basically, originally it was supposed to be an aviation program that kind of fell by the wayside, so it's unused, other than temporarily by the Fire Department and the Police Department to store their helicopters until it's relocated or their hangar is built on Lagoon Tribe. We did fly up to Denver, we met with Fading West, that has a modular manufacturing plant, very, very impressive. So they actually come into town, we're going to show them the hangar, as well as talk about maybe a collaborative effort to create a modular manufacturing plant here eventually. We want to try and transition it and do an interim approach and have them ship some of the modular units. A pilot project is working with Habitat for Humanity on Maui, see how that goes. And if we can get the cost down, I mean, it's ridiculously high, the cost of housing here in Hawaii. And so we gotta, we gotta look for ways to get the price down. This is our attempt.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else here to testify? All right, moving on, Senate Bill 1653. Again, Colley?
I'll stand on my testimony.
Stand on your testimony, all right. Is there anybody else who wants to testify? Seeing none?
Chair, I'm sorry. I'd like to ask Colley Watson on SB 1553.
Sure.
I understand that their intent is to buy that place and put modular housing. So is it your intent to rent out the modular housing?
No, this is for, for sale. It'll be, like, right now, we sell the vertical construction to the homesteaders, similarly, we do the same.
Okay, so it's going to be, so you're going to be selling the housing along with giving a lease?
Yes.
On the underlying property?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Just as clarification, idea is to cut down the overall cost of construction?
Exactly.
Okay.
As well as speed up the process with the modular, you know, can go 24/7 and construct. There is a challenge with the labor supply here in Hawaii. So some of our projects, we got to kind of really phase it and spread it out. This particular plant can crank out about forty units per month. So it might not seem like a lot, but we could even up that if we combine the plant in Buena Vista along with ours here. So again, looking for not only expediting the process, but getting the price down.
I'm sorry, one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Frankly, I expect the price of everything to go up really fast.
Yeah.
Especially for building, because one of the California wildfires and two potential towers, yeah.
Sure.
So have you thought about just award, I mean, if you get this, just awarding the leasehold? And, and just require the homesteaders who are awarded it to do their own housing? And just, I mean, which is what it is in a number of, when you folks award leaseholds now, right?
Sure. We had an orientation this past Saturday, where we're going to build seven hundred sixty units in Kapolei. And so at our presentation, kind of to address what you're talking about, we explained to the beneficiaries that we're going to offer or award them a paper lease. And then once they receive it, we'll do a vetting, see what their financial condition is. And then we'll create four categories. For those that have, you know, fairly well income oriented or have a good income turnkey. Then those that are below sixty percent AMI, we do that li tech, low income housing tax credit with option to purchase. So they don't have to pre-qualify for a mortgage. And then the third category is working with Habitat. And the fourth category, which, what you're talking, is we just give them a finished lot and they build it on their own. But all of them will have a paper lease that should they pass away before they get started, they at least can pass it on to their beneficiary. It's only twenty-five percent Hawaii.
Okay, so the modular one is going to be just an option of the, in addition to the, your other potential?
Well, it, it may be kind of like our go-to approach, if we find that the savings are tremendous. These units that we're building are going to be very high quality.
Okay.
Question, Chair?
Question? You good?
I'm done, I'm done. And I went back.
That's all right.
Excuse me, since you were on there.
Yeah, keep going, go ahead.
Same bill, thank you so much, Chair. The modular homes, is that something that you folks were able to have a beneficiary consultation on? Is this something that the beneficiaries want?
Well, it's obviously something regarding the pricing. We've heard, you know, a lot complaining about the pricing and the recent award we did in Puno, Pu'ona. And just overall, you know, in trying to build housing, the costs across the state has become very, very unaffordable. And that's why we have to use these alternative approaches with tax credits, bonds, and various other funding sources to get the costs down, net result. And so that, it's not a matter of asking in consultation, it's really a matter of how do we adjust the problem that's very obvious.
Would you be considering this to be a part of, I know that this is a separate ask for funds, but would this be within the realm of the Act 279 or not necessarily? Is this for waitlisters, renters, commercial leases? I mean, what are we building for? Who are we building for? Because I think.
Well, the, what is it, 1606, I believe? That one does allow flexibility in the use of the funds. This is a separate individual. Regarding the original Act 279, I don't believe it allows us to use that, those funds. It's, you know, so, and then plus the six hundred million, we already have it allocated to twenty-eight projects. We don't want to take it and, you know, use it for this. We're looking at about four point eight million, we're going to need to rehab, at least initial rehab of that, what do you call it, hangar. So it's not really expensive, because we're not looking at using the high tech with the, you know, what do you call it?
Robotics.
Robotics, excuse me.
I see. Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify, this conversation was concerning Senate Bill 1553.
Yes.
Though, even though the number says 16, thank you, IT. All right, any further questions on 1553? Okay, we went to 1653, moving on. Colley, you said you stood on your.
My testimony.
Is there any questions for Director? Seeing none. Moving on to Senate Bill 1656. We have only, we have Michael Rice in support, written testimony. Luon Mahiki Langford Favorito in support, Tony Withington in support, and then DHHL in support, and here in person, Colley?
Yes, I'll stand on my testimony. It's pretty straightforward, we do need, you know, pump stories, hydro power, and it makes a lot of sense, especially on the big island, so.
Yeah, that's my district, this is actually my bill too.
It's an excellent bill, personally, I think. One of the best I've seen, maybe.
Okay, any questions for the director?
Yeah, you forgot handsome.
Okay, any questions from the committee?
Okay, yeah, my question is, and I, you know, you're not, you're not the director, Colley, but you're the only one who's going to testify. Why, why go bonds? Why not spurs?
Why go bonds? Well, you can spread out the costs and, you know, it's a lot more affordable and fundable versus, you know, upfront using a lump sum payment for the, the.
Special purpose revenue bonds?
Right.
Okay.
Sorry, Chair, can I just make one more comment with 1553?
Okay, so, Colley, since you're here, you're batting it all. Okay, IT, they're going to be having 1553 conversations, so go ahead, Senator.
Thank you, IT, thank you, Chair, thank you, Chair Watson. So with 1553, I have serious concerns about acquiring a property to build homes for a survey that was never vetted by the beneficiaries with funds that the ledge will continue to have to give. Right now, the property is assessed at about four point eight, I'm sure. Tacking on extra services and getting it ready to build these modular homes will cost even more and more. And so I have serious reservations about this, Chair. I think that the department has, the legislature has been generous with the department to award the six hundred million dollars within the Act 279. And I think that us following through with the success of that should, I guess, maybe, I think once we get there, then we can kind of open up the discussion for other things. And so for me, in this, I would have to vote down respectfully, Chair. And the only reason is being because I, I, I don't have the trust in the department right now that this is a property that was previously, I think, under your stewardship, maybe about twenty years ago with a company that you had quality homes that unfortunately you lost the lease on this very same tax map key, which is concerning to me. Because I'm not necessarily sure what the intention is, I understand you shared to build modular homes, but I, I can't trust the department to just take it at face value. And right now, five million dollars is a lot, tacking on to the six hundred million dollars that the legislature has already given you. So for me, respectfully, I would vote it down, Chair, but I appreciate the opportunity to testify. Chair Watson, thank you very much for the opportunity to listen in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We're going to recess. We're in recess. And we are reconvene for decision-making on Senate Bill 1408. It's a recommendation of the Chair to amend with some SMA tech amendments and pass with those amendments. Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, SB 1408, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair votes. Aye, Senator Ihara?
Aye.
Senator Kilkulole?
Aye.
Senator Decort?
Aye.
Chair recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1553. It's a recommendation of the Chair to blank the appropriations on page one, line six, and provide a defective date of July 1, 2050. Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on SB 1553, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendment. Are there any no's? Seeing none, are there? Senator, the court is a no. Any reservations? Seeing none, Chair recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1653. It is a recommendation of the Chair to pass as is.
Okay, voting on SB 1653, Chair's recommendation is to pass unamended, no excuse absences. Are there any no's? Seeing none, are there reservations? Seeing none, Chair recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And finally, on Senate Bill 1656, proposed amendments. Prior to the issuance of general obligation bonds, DHHL shall conduct a feasibility study evaluating projected costs, revenue potential, and environmental impacts. DHHL shall possess the ability to contract with an outside agency to conduct a technical study or to conduct such studies within the department if such capabilities exist. The Department of Hawaiian Homelands shall submit to the legislature the results of the report no later than the start of the 2028 legislative session. And in Section 3, DHHL shall conduct an environmental impact statement in accordance with HRS Chapter 343, including consultation with the Commission on Water Resource Management, CWRM, to ensure suitable water usage. The Department of Hawaiian Homelands, DHHL, shall submit an annual progress report to the legislature detailing expenditures, milestones, and anticipated projection timelines. Recommendation is to pass with amendments and provide a defective date of July 1, 2050. Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you. Voting on SB 1656, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendment. All senators being present, are there any reservations? Seeing none, are there any no's? Seeing none, Chair recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. We have come to the end of our agenda, we stand adjourned. Aloha, everyone, this is a joint committee hearing for the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs and the Committee on Housing. I am Tim Richards, the Chair of Hawaiian Affairs.
Chairman?
I am Stanley Chang, the Chair of the Housing Committee.
Thank you. Thank you. We have one item before us, today’s Senate Bill 1405. For testifiers, we have Department of Taxation in person testifying. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee. Garrison Kurt, Department of Taxation. The department stands on its written comments regarding administration, and I’m under questions.
Thank you. Moving on, Tom Yamachika for Tax Foundation on Zoom.
Not available on Zoom, Chair.
They are available?
Not available, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Sandy Wong for the Dwelling Company on Zoom.
Also not available on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, that was in support as well. And Ani Au Hun in support. And finally, DHHL in support here in person. Colley?
I’m standing on my testimony.
Okay, thank you, Colley. Senators, any question? Either committee, no questions. We’re back in session. And on the subject of Senate Bill 1405, it’s a recommendation of this Chair to pass with amendments. The amendments would be to require annual reporting to the legislature for a five-year period detailing cost savings, reinvestments, and housing production increases resulting from the exemption, and then to have the requirement of reporting sunset in five years. So to the Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on SB 1405, Chair’s recommendation--
Oh, excuse me, Vice Chair. Also, there are some tech amendments that we need to clean up the bill.
Okay, voting on SB 1405, Chair’s recommendation is to pass with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair vote. Aye, Senator Ihara. Excuse, Senator Kiel Kolole.
Aye.
Senator Decort.
Aye.
Chair recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And for the Committee on Housing, the same recommendation to -- for SB 1405 to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Members, Chair recommendation is to pass SB 1405 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Kino is excused. Senator Kanuha.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Aye.
Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We’ve come to the end of our agenda.
Good afternoon. Welcome back to the deferred decision-making agenda of the Committee on Housing at 1:00 p.m. We’re in Room 224 right now, and we’ll be taking up these measures that were previously heard in the Committee on Housing. Our first is Senate Bill 69 relating to deposits of public funds. The Chair’s recommendation will be to pass this measure with amendments and to take the identical amendments of the Committee on Consumer Protection, which is to defect the date. Members, any questions or discussion? Okay, if not, for Senate Bill 69, Chair’s recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Members, Chair recommendation for SB 69 is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Aquino is excused. Senator Kanuha.
Aye.
Senator Favella.
Chair, I mean, aye.
All right. Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Our second measure is Senate Bill 534 relating to HCDAs. The Chair’s recommendation will be to pass this measure with the same amendments that the Committees on Water and Land and Hawaiian Affairs passed. First, to clarify HCDAs approval process for Kakaako Makai residential projects, ensuring OHA’s proposals undergo public hearings and community feedback while refining care requirements for applicants. To require applicants to complete an environmental impact statement before submitting residential projects to the HCDAs, a process that already requires climate adaptation, aircraft-related nuisances, and water resource impacts to be addressed. Require that the applicant obtain documentation from the Department of Health verifying that the applicant has adequately removed or capped any hazardous substances, pollutants, and contaminants detected on a parcel to be developed. Specify that only parcels owned by OHA shall be eligible for proposed residential development with a maximum height of 400 feet. Clarify that OHA shall determine the Kakaako Makai association fee to be collected from residents, tenants, and lessees of parcels in Kakaako Makai to be deposited into a special account of the OHA Special Fund and be dispersed per HCDAs and OHA procedures to support area projects, enhance land value, and fund native Hawaiian programs. Specify that the maximum floor area for any residential development on certain parcels of Kakaako Makai shall not exceed 10.0. And to insert language to ensure that 50% plus 1 of the residential units developed on certain parcels be allocated to households with an income at or below 140% of the area median income remain affordable in perpetuity. Members, any discussion? Vice Chair Hashmada.
Thank you, Chair. I know you worked really hard with the Chair of Waterland to make this possible. I think these are all good amendments that need to be made to allow this to move forward. I think I do want to reiterate that, moving forward, this is going to be a very complicated project. You know, I think when we take a look at 50% of affordability, I think the state, as I said in the hearing, and I asked the Chair of OHA if he’s going to come back to the state for subsidy, and his answer was yes. And unfortunately, he’s probably going to have to stand in line with everybody else. You know, we have a lot of state subsidy projects from HPHA to, you know, HHFTC doing their own projects, to the private sector trying to do some of their own projects. And so it’s just, I hope they can figure it out, but we all know that affordable housing is very difficult. And, you know, if OHA wants to pick this parcel up to them, but, you know, I think we wish them well, and I hope people realize this isn’t a silver bullet that they think that’s going to magically make housing appear. It’s going to be a long journey ahead, and so I hope they know what they’re getting themselves into. But with that, I’ll support it. It’s just, I think everyone needs to know the landscape that we’re looking at at this point. So thank you, Chair, for your work on this.
Point is well taken. Maybe we can adopt some of these concerns into the committee report.
And I just, if you want to take some of that into consideration, that if this body, you know, if OHA gets the funding, the 69 or plus million dollars that is supposed to be allocated for decades, then, you know, maybe they won’t come back to this body. And I understand the Senator’s point about coming back and competing, but I really feel that OHA wouldn’t have to compete if we actually gave the money that we’re supposed to be allocating them from the different departments. So I agree with the Senator. I’m on this, but I think that is a good thing, and we got to help them be able to get the money that they deserve. Thank you for working on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator. Any further discussion? Okay, again, for Senate Bill 534, Chair’s recommendation will be to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Members, SB 534, Chair’s recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Kino is excused. Senator Kanuha.
Aye.
Senator Kanuha. I mean, Favella, sorry.
Aye.
Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Our next measure is Senate Bill 491. So both Senate Bill 491 and 490 are on this agenda. These are similar programs, but Senate Bill 491 is to construct new housing and 490 is for existing housing. So the Chair’s inclination is to defer 490 and use 491 as the vehicle. So for Senate Bill 491, the Chair’s recommendation will be to pass this measure with amendments. They’re technical, non-substantive amendments for the purposes of clarity and consistency. We also want to take the Attorney General’s recommended amendment to remove the durational residency requirement on page 7, lines 17 and 18, and page 8, lines 1 to 3. We’ll also take the Department of Taxation’s recommendation that Section 6 -- for Section 6 to take effect on January 1, 2026, to allow for necessary form and instruction changes. For HCDAs, we’ll take their -- HHFTC’s recommendations to include properties held in revocable living trusts in the definition of eligible homeowner or homebuyer. Clarify the amount paid to the property owner to be a negotiated amount up to the appraised value. To allow second position for deed restrictions in circumstances like planned communities where conditions, covenants, and restrictions are in the first position. And to clarify that 201H-C for the deed restriction, that it applies to both the primary residence and the ADU. We’ll further make an amendment to change the funding source from the Dwelling Unit Revolving Fund to the Rental Housing Revolving Fund. We’ll change it from a grant to a purchase of equity such that within 30 years or upon subsequent sale or transfer of the property, whichever is sooner, HHFTC must be repaid for its prorated share of the appraised value of the completed ADU with appreciation. And finally, we’ll defect the date. We’ll also note in the committee report that counties already have this authority and that Maui County has already implemented a similar grant program, that the legislature should study that program before committing state funds to such a program. And further, that a loan rather than a grant program would allow the state to recover its investment, enabling it to finance other ADUs and housing in the future. For example, the DIRF equity program enables the state to share in the capital gain of units receiving state capital. Alternatively, other ways for the state to unlock the value of its investment and enable it to be used for future housing construction should be explored. Members, do we have any discussion? Okay, so for Senate Bill 491, Chair’s recommendation will be to pass this measure with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Members, SB 491, Chair’s recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? While others voting aye, recommendation is adopted, and noting Senator Aquino is excused.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, for SB 490, we’ll be deferring that measure because SB 491 will be our vehicle. Finally, for SB 834, the Chair will be deferring -- further deferring decision-making until Thursday, February 6, at 1:00 p.m. in Room 225. Any discussion? Okay, if not, there be no further business. This committee is now adjourned.